All right. Hi. We're on, whatever, y'all.
There we are.
Oh, there we are. Thank you. All right. Welcome, everyone, to the December 19, 2018, Neshoba Regional School Committee Regular Meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:00. And if it's okay with the committee, I'm gonna flip a couple of items on the agenda. We've got the Neshoba Regional High School Choral Group here, and I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Clancy so that you can do the introductions.
Sure.
And then, please, get us all in a festive mood, y'all.
So I'm gonna tee it up, and we'll have your director kind of let us know what you're gonna do. Before we go anywhere, though, I want to say I was there on Friday night for the concert. Amazing. Oh my gosh. The harmonies, the selections, your attention to detail, the phrasing, the dynamics, like, amazing. Just what an amazing night. The chief tones, loved them. And for sure, I think Rudolph was probably my favorite with the unified choral group. I think that was probably my favorite of the night was Rudolph. The band, the jazz selections, oh my gosh. It was just, what a great night. You couldn't have had a prouder superintendent sitting in the audience. I'm so proud of you, so thank you so much. So Rachel, we'll turn it over to you, and we'll have you introduce.
Sounds good. So festive-wise, we've got 30-second "Fala La" for you, and I'm sorry, it's only 30 seconds long. And then, we're gonna sing a song, actually, from our first concert. They picked this one to share with you. It's "Ina That Good News," which is a traditional gospel hymn. So, let's get that. Our perfect pitch pipe.
That's a skill?
I usually bring classic choir here, but I wanted to bring a different group, and also there's been illnesses and whatnot at the high school, so it's not the complete group, but we've got a good group here, so. Thanks, Laura. One, two. I got a crown up in the kingdom, ain't that good news? I got a crown up in the kingdom, ain't that good news? I'm gonna lay down this world, gonna shoulder up on my cross, gonna take it home unto my Jesus, ain't that good news? Good news.
I got a harp up in the kingdom, ain't that good news?
Ain't that good news?
I got a harp up in the kingdom, ain't that good news?
Ain't that good news?
I'm gonna lay down this world, gonna shoulder up on my cross, gonna take it home unto my Jesus, ain't that good news? Good news. I got a robe up in the kingdom, ain't that good news? I got a robe up in the kingdom, ain't that good news? I'm gonna lay down this world, gonna shoulder up on my cross, gonna take it home unto my Jesus, ain't that good news? Good news. I got a savior in the kingdom, ain't that good news? Ain't that good news? I got a savior in the kingdom, ain't that good news? Ain't that good news? I'm gonna lay down this world, gonna shoulder up on my cross, gonna take it home unto my Jesus, ain't that good news? Good news. Good news. Good news, my love. Ain't that good news? Good news, my love. Ain't that good news?
That worked. That worked.
That works. That definitely works.
Oh my gosh.
That was beautiful.
Thanks. Thanks for having us.
Oh, we really appreciate it.
Can you come back like every meeting? 6:00.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Two more days, one more day.
Two more days.
Two more days. You can do it. I can do it, you can do it. And I have four hours. You can do it.
Yeah, that would work. That would be...
That's her.
You guys could do that, right?
Well, we, yeah.
Thank you so much.
I carried it.
Oh, that was nice. Take a deep breath. Everybody's rushing to get to the end of the week. All right, so we're gonna return to the agenda, and the next item on the agenda, since I flip them on you, is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments?
Could you tell us your name and the town you're from, and which item on the agenda you're referencing?
Yes. My name is Liz Davis Edwards. I'm from Bolton, and I'm referencing the Emerson Survey.
Okay. So typically what we do, and I just need to say this for everyone, you know this anyway, but Liz and I worked on this. Sorry, I'm gonna go down a rat hole here for a second. Liz and I were on the school council together at Florence School. So we generally like to keep to around three minutes to allow others who may have a comment to make it. I don't even have to say this to you, but I know you personally, but we want to be cautious about not calling out individuals.
No swearing.
I think you don't, anyway. That would be my world, but anyway, why don't you go ahead?
I keep myself under control.
Yeah, go ahead, Liz.
All right. So we would like to make a statement, as I said, in connection with the Emerson Survey, which is obviously on tonight's agenda. Among other things, the survey focuses on the well-being of our students, which we heard from tonight, which is so awesome, as well as the levels of drug usage across the Neshoba Regional School District. Our concerns connect directly with both of these issues. As you're reviewing the Emerson Survey tonight, we hope that you'll take the following into consideration. First, having collectively parented dozens of NRHS students, several recent events in the Neshoba Regional High School have fueled our concern that morale among students and teachers is quickly declining. Of course, this directly impacts the well-being of our students. These events include an Instagram activity by Maddie Fisher in which she shared her concerns about the administration, resulting in her suspension; the Neshoba memes account, which similarly criticized the current administration, again, leading to a suspension; the Neshoba People's Front rallying students to stand up to the current administration, again, resulting in suspension; the 72% of students who answered "no" to "are you proud to be a Neshoba High School student?" on a recent student-run survey, which we mentioned only directionally, recognizing that that survey was not perfect by any stretch; the teachers' roundtables where teachers reportedly aired their concerns regarding the current administration. In fact, 35 of the 44 participants or 80% who made the effort to show up to those roundtables to discuss issues directly with the superintendent came from the high school. Secondly, vaping. In terms of drug usage, particularly vaping, when the Emerson Survey was taken last school year, 33% of the upperclassmen in high school admitted to experimenting with vaping. Of this concern, CNN recently stated the following. "The bottom line, according to Alex Azar, the U.S. Secretary of Health and Human Services, is that the data sets we use for vaping have never been seen," or, sorry, "we have never seen a use of any substance rise this quickly." They went on to state that "according to their numbers, there's been a 78% increase in student vaping from 2017 to 2018. Unlike the authors of the meme accounts, when a student is caught vaping, they are not automatically suspended. We recognize that some efforts are in place to educate our community, and we appreciate those efforts, including the community meetings on the calendar. However, we feel that this is insufficient to deal with such an unprecedented problem that's increasing at such an alarming rate." I'm almost done. I know I'm a timer, sorry.
You're fine. You're fine.
As a group of parents, we shared some of these concerns, as you guys know, last May. In the meantime, we've communicated in greater detail with the school committee and have met in person with Superintendent Clancy and Principal Dina Minico. There remains a significant disconnect between the information we have received in these meetings and the information we have heard from others in our high school community. For this reason, we respectfully ask for more data about both the morale at the high school and the increase in vaping, as well as an associated action plan based on the results. We further request to be part of that process. We recognize that this is an issue for administration, not for the school committee, and have asked the same of both Superintendent Clancy and Principal Dina Minico in our meetings with them. Given the school committee's responsibility over the administration, we've come here today to reiterate these concerns with the members of the school committee. Our objective here is simple. We love Neshoba Regional High School. Like you, we believe in the great and unlimited power of our community to transform students and open doors, not only to their future and opportunities that lie ahead, but also to lifelong creativity, learning, and the power to change the world. We are here as stewards of this community, to help identify and remove barriers to these high ideals. We look forward to joining with you on this errand. That's all I got.
That's enough.
It is enough.
Thank you for sharing that. This is a time when I have a really difficult time being the chair of the school committee, because there are so many things I want to talk to you about, and I don't know why you guys haven't asked me to sit and talk with you, but you know that I would. I know all three of you. You know me, you know where I live. Call me, and I will give you my input, but you're absolutely right. At this point, and at points earlier, we turn it over to the administration, and we say to the administration, "What's going on? Look into it for us," and we're assured that they are. So at this point, I can't offer, because I can't, we can't influence, we can influence, we cannot contain what's going on in there. So I'm gonna turn this over to you, if you have anything that you want to share, or if you would like to...
No, no, because I think what she's saying is precisely what they had said to us in our meeting that we held earlier. So she's not saying anything here, I don't think that you didn't, you haven't already shared with us. So none of this was new to me tonight.
So why don't, I'm just gonna make this, I know I'm not supposed to, but I'm just gonna make this invitation that you contact me and meet me somewhere, and we'll have a conversation.
Will do.
Understanding what I can't do, and just so that you feel that you're being heard.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay. The only update I have is to remind everyone of the January 26 budget workshop. I think we're starting, are we starting at 8?
We generally start, yeah, we generally start around that 8 o'clock mark.
And just plan on the entire morning.
Yeah, we generally...
And a little bit more.
Yeah, a little bit more.
And get a lot of sleep the night before, because it's gonna be a long one. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Delisle.
All right, so, starting off, I'll switch it up this time, we'll start with arts. The cast list for Neshoba's upcoming musical, Mary Poppins, was released last Thursday, and rehearsals begin after break. The show will be held the weekend of March 17. The winter band and choral concerts at the high school, as well as the middle schools, were held recently. You guys just got a preview of what they were like. There was a sock drive held at the high school concert, run by one of the school's bus drivers, who aimed to collect as many pairs of socks as he could and donate them to various homeless shelters around the area. There will be a holiday assembly this Friday at the high school, where the concert band will perform their set for students and members of the community. For sports, the winter teams have all begun their seasons. Unfortunately, the boys' hockey team started off their season with a 5-2 loss against Hudson High School on Monday. The boys' basketball team is 2-1 after defeating Narragansett in Shrewsbury recently, but losing to one of their biggest opponents, St. John's Shrewsbury. The girls' basketball team also defeated Shrewsbury High School yesterday, 42-36. Indoor track had a meet on December 6, and we are still waiting for the results, but it is looking good for the Chieftains based on the individual performances of many of the athletes. And the middle schools have also begun their basketball seasons. So for some events, some high school seniors, as well as middle school eighth graders, went to see a Christmas carol for their field trips yesterday at the Hannover Theater. The Neshoba Cup is back at the high school, where the different classes will be able to compete to see who has the most school spirit. So far, the seniors are in the lead. This week is holiday spirit week at the high school, today being ugly sweater day, and everyone wearing an ugly sweater earned a point towards their class score.
Hers is on ugly sweater. Hers lights up.
Would you like us to see? I think Elaine should model.
I give my points to the front.
I'm sure that you...
I think you should model.
And the Neshoba Stuco Student Council is holding a hat mitten and sock drive this week to help those who are less fortunate during the holiday season.
So can I just make a couple of quick comments here? First of all, with regards to socks, if they found the one pair of mittens in that pile that it was for me, I'm gonna own that right now, because I did not have a pair of socks, but I did have a pair. I just wanna own that. The second thing I would say is that game, the other night, the Friday night game, was a nail-biter. Oh my goodness. And the other thing I would take note of is I've never seen so many 6'2 elves, as I saw that night.
Yeah, there were probably five in the front row, I'd say.
Yes, there were. It's Santa Claus is everywhere. It was, I mean, it was just, it was such a cool night.
I know, we all love the spirit.
It was just so fun to watch, and they were saying that, somebody had mentioned in the crowd that they've never seen that much spirit at a home basketball game like they'd seen that night.
Yeah.
And it was just, it was amazing, and I took several fan pictures. None of them turned out really well enough to tweet out, but the excitement in the crowd that night was unbelievable, but I loved, oh, yes, oh, there they are, yes. Thought I was joking about the 6'2 elves. There were all kinds of, lots of ugly sweaters, I mean, this whole group, it was just, it was amazing. It was just a great night. Thanks for bringing that up, Elise, I appreciate that. Anyway, hats off to everybody, thank you, and thanks very much for your report tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for Colin? Oh, congratulate your sister for me.
I will.
Okay, thanks, Lauren.
Where's his ugly sweater?
Elaine's wearing it.
Okay. Superintendent's report, please.
Sure, thank you. I'm gonna go through this quickly, because I know we've got a long night, so Todd and I will try to be as quickly, as quick as we can. And I know, here's a picture of the concert Friday night, too. There were almost more people on the stage than there were in the audience that night. It was so packed. If you could imagine, the stage was full of kids, and between the stage and the seats were full of kids. I mean, it was just, it was an amazing night. It was an amazing concert.
Pretty crowded in there.
It was very crowded in there, but what a wonderful evening. It was just really, really nice. So I just put a little note here, it's been a season of music in all of our schools, it really has been, from the concerts to sing-alongs. You know, you've got some sing-alongs coming up, I know, on Friday, and I think you'll be taking those in on Friday and getting your voice all ready to join in right there. So we want to thank everybody for all of their efforts in the area of music, it's been a great season. The new sports seasons, you know, I just want to make another comment or two. I was always, of course, I'm always so appreciative of the athletes, I mean, they are center stage, I mean, I totally get that. And I think what struck me the other night in watching such a tight game is the determination of our kids, the perseverance, the grit, but the sportsmanship was just so cool, I mean, just so amazing. But I think we never want to lose sight of the fact that, yes, it's the athletes, but it's all the, you have the people behind you. It's your AD, it's your parents, it's your fans, it's, you know, the people running the concession stand, selling all those pizzas. I don't know how many pizzas they went through that night, but they went through a lot. Everybody that's involved with that, the volunteers at the door, the people running the score clocks, like, it takes a village, and we just do a great job in Neshoba, so I just want to do a shout-out on that, too. So you're gonna talk about the S3 Academy and the Points of Pride, and then I'll wrap up with the last item.
Great. In terms of some components, some happenings around curriculum, teaching and learning, we recently applied for a grant through the Department of Education, which announced a new systemic student support, or S3 Academy, aligned with its safe and supportive schools initiatives. Neshoba was one of several districts selected to participate in this. The Academy is actually sponsored and facilitated by the Rennie Center and Boston College-Lin School of Education Center for optimized student support, and it focuses more on K-8 programs in K-8 schools. It includes three in-person workshops, one in December, which a variety of us attended last week, one in February, and one in April, and then two virtual webinar meetings, one held in January and March, and is designed to deepen practitioners' understanding of the critical components of a system that effectively and proactively identify and address students' strengths and needs for social-emotional learning, and the impact that it has in the classroom. As I mentioned last Wednesday, several district administrators, teachers, and support staff attended the first workshop session, which was designed to introduce teachers and administrators to new and innovative ways to address social-emotional learning in our K-8 classrooms. So we're excited about receiving that grant. The next one is our commitment to communication and Points of Pride. So Reyna Rego, our director of extended learning, is reaching out to area local papers and news media for our next Neshoba Pride article. It's gonna be focused on Points of Pride in our middle schools, with, again, a focus on social-emotional learning. Each of our middle schools will spotlight what they are doing with advisory programs to continue to personalize learning experiences and connect with one another during the school day. The article will also highlight our middle school programming and upcoming events and celebrations at each of our schools, as well as our new extended learning programming that's been mentioned here several times for grades 6 through 8, and the camps that are coming up for February and April for our middle school extended learning program. So be on the lookout for that.
Yeah, very exciting. Just, it made me think of it, too. Normally, I don't put that kind of thing in here, but just FYI, Matt Ettinger is gonna be sitting in with the state and helping to support the revisions to our health and wellness standards, and he's gonna be our representative, which is really great, because there's not a representative in the school district. We happen to have a representative here that's gonna sit on the statewide revision, so very proud of Matt, so thanks very much for doing that. The last piece that I'm gonna put on here is about our technology tasting, and I see Laura's here, so Laura, maybe, I hate to put you on the spot, but you might be able to talk to it a little bit better, speak to it a little bit better than I can. I just thought it was amazing. Both Todd and I went over, but maybe you can just give a brief overview. Laura Friend is our, thank you, Laura Friend is our principal at Luther Burbank, and Laura, I'd like to point out that we have a picture here of, this is Steve Brand, this is flying on fire, and if we shift, I think I've got a picture of you in your attire as well. Yes, there we are.
Thank you for that.
It was such an amazing thing, so why don't you just quickly speak, I know, sorry to put you on the spot.
No worries. So it was much in the theme of a book tasting, where you taste a little bit of a book before you decide which book you really want to read in its entirety, so we took that idea and kind of ran with it with technology, and we chose five different technology tools that we think are really robust and great for our middle school students, and we did a technology tasting. So there were five different facilitated teachers. We had two teacher leaders running two of the stations. Martina Kenyon, Cindy Larson, and Greg Newton also ran a station, so it totaled a five. And then we had cheese and crackers, sparkling water.
I was gonna say ambiance, you had the music going, the dim lights, it was, it was amazing.
And the teachers rotated through each technology station to get a taste of that technology for five minutes, and then at the end, we had them complete a survey about which technology tool they would like to learn more about in detail, and that's gonna be the focus of our January staff meeting.
That's awesome. You even had a menu board up. And the invitation, a formal invitation for a little piece of pizza.
They didn't have a choice not to go to the staff, but it was still fun.
It was so fun.
And the teachers appreciated it.
Yeah.
So very grateful for all the support that we were able to garner to make that happen.
Very, very, very good. And, you know, I was talking to Gary today, and he and Greg are so proud of it, too, and so I said, "Yes, we want to see that replicated now throughout the district," because it was just...
We had absolutely no problem stealing that idea and it worked, right?
Anyway, it was just fun, and so thank you so much, Laura, sorry for putting you on the spot there. Oh, so I don't know if you noticed, this is not on the list here, but did you notice the pictures when you came in? So the first set of pictures, this was Todd's house, he was hanging them that day for us. There'll be signage that goes in between each one of these. Bolton was the first one, we put Lancaster, because it's got the longest name, in the middle, and then this is Stowe to the right. And then we also have a picture of each of our communities, one of those, I keep calling them legacy pictures, that we'll be hanging up in the New Year in the high school for each of the communities as well. So very excited about that. And the signage that we're putting up here, when it gets in, and if we like it, we think that we will, will be in same signage at the high school. And then the last picture, which is probably my favorite picture, I can't tell you, I cannot tell you how many gingerbread houses we pulled together, and I'm not gonna lie, I was at Mary Rowlandson the other day, I'd like to say helping a young lad, but I think I ate as many marshmallows as I helped to put on those. It was so much fun, so hats off to everybody. What a great holiday season, a winter season that we just had, it was just so much fun. So thanks to everyone, but for sure, that was my favorite picture, I just had to put it out there for you, so I tweeted it out earlier today, so that's it for Superintendent's report.
That's a good one, too. Let's see how the rest of the meeting goes. Okay. Thank you, Colin. Have a good one.
Nice to see you. Happy holidays to you.
I'm gonna ask Pat Maroney, our business manager, to come up and share with us the October-November treasure reports, the October-November results of operations, and then she's gonna give us a facilities update. So we'll turn it over to you.
The treasures report.
Yeah.
First, please. and it looks like the cash flow is right where it should be for this time of year, and if anybody has any questions about anything.
Any questions on October or November? No? Okay, moving on.
Next is the results of operations for the month of October.
Anybody have any questions about anything? You want to give us the highlights, Pat? What's going on in the budget versus actual column?
Yes, in the budget versus actual, you can see in the insurance and benefits account, we have just a little bit of a surplus, and that has been consistent the last couple of months, so we're going to, you know, that should continue throughout the school year, barring any major changes. In the system-wide, you can see that there's a difference between October and November. If you want to just flash into the November report, too, you can look at the two of them, because it's probably best to look at a comparison between the two.
And I don't think that we're looking for you to go through every single one, and I think I just highlight any...
Just the highlights.
Right. That would be the only one, the only two that there's major change, because it's actually in November, in November, the insurance and benefits went up a little bit, and then there's a major change in the system-wide, and that had to do with the turf field debt payment that came in, and that was actually posted in November, so there's actually a change.
So you're always gonna see an EBIT flow in these numbers.
Right, it's always going to change like that, because of, when it comes in, it gets posted to one account, and then usually I have to do some journal entries to put things into the possible, into the funds.
Isn't a debt payment, wouldn't that be considered a projected expenditure? I mean, that seems really predictable. So why, I don't understand why that would be baked into projected expenditures, because there's a $200,000 swing there. It went from being $100,000 in the hole, over budget, to being $100,000.
Right, and the reason why that happened is because when the debt assessment came in, it came in in the month of October, and I corrected it in November, because part of it's funded by a revolving fund, and that's the way we budgeted for that. So that's why there's such a big swing in that.
Yeah, so, again, I don't understand any of this, but is the October, I just pretend to. So the budget versus actual column, the last figure for October, is that what's left in the budget or not? That 357143.
Yes.
Okay, so, for November...
You do understand it. You're bad.
I just saw what it did.
Moving on.
All right, so for November, it's 594193. Why is it more in November?
Because at this point in the year, this is when we start to have, like, in September, we have all of our new employees come on, and we wait for the bills to come through from Blue Cross, and then we have to adjust our projection going forward. So there are some changes there, and as you can see, the change, the swing from the 99,000 negative to the 101,251, you see, that's why it went up that amount.
So where's the money come, was it, yeah, were their monies coming in to make that flush?
Yes.
Okay, so...
From where, is what she's...
Right, and actually, what happens at the end of November is everybody is settled in their insurance, and things start to settle down, we start to know where the money is, we start to see information that we can base our assessments on, so you'll see some changes in those two counts.
So the money, money comes in for... So the money, money comes in for like four times a year and.
Monthly.
Monthly. And that reflects what comes in, and that's the adjustments.
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
It's a little complex, but.
Don't I know any other questions? Elaine?
So Luther Burbank's already over budget for the year. That's put you on the spot.
Yeah, I looked at that one, too.
But like, yeah, is there something unexpected? Like what happened there? What do you think the rest of the year looks like?
It was personnel, the personnel that we had talked about in the budget process.
The change that we made by moving somebody from this building over.
Right. And that's reflected.
The administration, the addition.
So does that mean that there's, so if there's a deficit in that line, then there, there should be an overage in another?
Yes.
Which is where?
At the high school.
Remember the switch? So that's where it came from.
So where would that, I don't see the high school on here, though.
It's right near the center.
No, there, okay, got it. But then there's still a 30, 20 something thousand dollar, 28,000 dollar. So what's, $18,000, is that? No, but I.
But that's.
How many?
Seven.
Seven?
Between, between the high schools.
No, that's not where, that's not where you were thinking, though. You were just thinking the total cost. So is that a question, Lorraine?
Yeah, I guess to piggyback on what Elaine said, so that was the movement from one staff member, from one school to the next.
From the funding for one to the other.
Okay.
Right, because it went around.
Okay. Good. Any other questions? Good? All right. Facilities update?
Facilities update. So we'll start with the bleaching field at the high school. The hydro geological permit application was submitted to Mass DEP on November 27. And we're in the 45-day review period right now. We expect that it should be ready to go sometime in mid-January. So we should have the final okay, and then we'll, that will be the first step in the process to continue and go out to bid for the cost of the remaining part of that project. The next item is the high school oil tank. We had a problem with our high school oil tank that we were taking some water in the containment chamber that existed. And basically what we did was, we had brought in a company to take a look at it, and they came up with temporary solution. But midstream, we had to change vendors because they weren't reacting quick enough for us to be comfortable with, you know, the building without, being without heat or anything. So we contracted with a new vendor who was very responsive, and they have a temporary tank in place. And we expect to have a plan for what we're going to do going forward in the next couple of weeks.
And they've cleaned the water out?
They've cleaned the water out.
Everything is, oh. So we're waiting now for the report to come back.
So we don't have estimate on.
We don't have an estimate.
We don't have an estimate at that. We're waiting for that.
We're waiting for it.
Elaine?
So this is an ongoing issue from when you first started, which was two and a half years ago? So the initial review of what was going on with that tank, did they ever find out? Or is it, did they fix what was going on back then?
They thought they had fixed it.
They thought they had fixed it.
And it didn't, it didn't take, the fix didn't take.
So there was no warranty or anything for the?
No. And the water proved to be more of a, more of a problem than we thought. And it literally broke everything, like, so.
So the people that did the work don't have to, if they, did they?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't that type of a fix. It was a, you know, and to be honest with you, I think we're also going to have to, like, we'll see what comes in. Like, I don't want to speak at a turn right now because I don't know what's going to come in in January. But I think we're going to have to take a look then and see how much, how much money are we going to put into this.
Because this doesn't, are there going to be multiple estimates, like what one to fix and one to replace? Because it doesn't sound like this is worth.
Well, it, there are multiple scenarios there. It could be that we can't replace it, that we, I mean, we can't repair, we won't have a choice. So we're going to look at all of those options once we have all of the.
So is there an engineer looking at that? Or is, how does that be?
We have, the company is, that we have working on it is looking at it right now. And then that will have to be submitted for approval. The town of Bolton has been in contact, too, with the DEP, so.
So would that be a DEP, would that be a warranted issue at that point?
Would there be a warranty at that point with this new vendor?
Well, like, whatever the solution is, will there be some kind of a guarantee?
Guarantee. I would, I would think, yeah. I would think that that.
I mean, it's, I mean, you're without heat?
Oh, no.
This was this.
No, she's got a temporary tank.
This happened on Friday afternoon. And basically was resolved.
But you got, but.
But this is a temporary solution for something that's been going on for two years.
I, oh, no, it's 20 some years. This has been, this has been problematic. Like, if you talk to folks who've been around, they said it's always been this issue. This isn't an issue just in the last two years. This has been problematic for years. But we just, we, we tried to fix it within the two years, but the fix wasn't, wasn't good enough.
Onto the center school, fire suppression tank, pump had a problem back, about a week ago?
About a week ago.
About a week ago. Basically, this tank holds the water for the suppression of fire and the.
That's my question.
Yeah. So basically, what happened was the submersible flow valve had to be replaced, which is something down inside. So we had to bring in somebody to repair it. We've been in communication with the fire department and the Thomas Stowe administration. And basically, it's all been repaired. Everything is up to where it should be, and we're moving on from here.
Yeah. So it's just a sensor?
Right.
Good. It's a sensor.
She understands the stone.
I know.
She's sort of like resident.
I'm just wondering, I mean, was, I mean, how did they find out that the sensor was broken? I mean, did?
It kept calling for water.
It was calling for water, and it would have burned out the pump.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Well, then, yeah, and that would have been more of a problem, so.
I just want to thank our Stowe administrators, too, because they were so quick to work with us, like, always. I mean, we've got great relationships with their towns. But this is one of those situations where you're just really grateful for the relationship that you have, that you can knock on the door and say, by the way, this is what's going on. We've got a major problem over there. So they were great to work with.
Yes, they were.
And the oil tank, you, oh, and the oil tank, we did.
Yeah.
All right.
We've talked about it all.
Any other questions for Pat?
Sorry, a question, uh, I don't know where to see one. Will we actually have cost estimates for fixing the oil tank before the budget season is wrapping up?
We're hoping. That's what we're aiming for.
We've told them that we need some pricing on that with a couple of different options, if possible, so that we can make a decision before the budget process ends.
Yeah. No, we're very, we're acutely aware of that.
Well, this is going to the town managers' words, right?
The oil tank, the high school is a little bit different.
It's ours.
It's over $10,000.
But doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
At the high school, we own it in charge.
Yeah. That's why the Stowe, we went to the Stowe right away to do, to deal with that. But the Bolton situation, the high school situation as well is different.
Unless it was Joel's building. Joel's going, phew. Thank you, Pat. Appreciate you coming in.
And.
Oh, you got something else?
I got something else.
What do you got?
The next, the DECA donation.
Oh, okay. So we're moving on to new business. Thanks for moving the meeting forward. Let's keep it going.
I'm not going to leave. Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, you're proud enough.
I'm sorry.
You have the floor.
Okay. I have a letter here from the Eastern Bank. Their charitable foundation has issued a check for $1,000 to our DECA program. And I would like to ask for your acceptance of this donation.
I move that we accept the donation of $1,000 from the Eastern Bank Charitable Foundation in the, oh, did I say $1,000 yet? Yeah. To support Neshova Regional High School's DECA program.
Lovely. May I have a second? Thank you, Steve. Any conversation, questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Motion passes.
I have a question.
You have a question?
So does the DECA program, do they individually go out and pursue that? Or is it?
I don't think so. Paul, I'm probably going to turn to Paul and Pat on that. I don't believe that they go out individually to solicit. That's not my understanding.
No, but I, they don't, but do their strong community relations in terms of working with businesses throughout.
The program itself, the DECA program.
The kids do. Have you seen any of the, so the kids go, I mean, and Mr. A and his partner up there, they go out and they talk to all those businesses. And then the businesses are the recipients of the really kind of cool work.
Good work that they do.
So I'm sure of that. That's just a, that's lovely, actually.
Basically, they're on PR.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah, action, yeah. Okay, thank you for that. The, okay, here we go, guys. This is the test. Neshova Regional High School Music Department overnight travel approval request. We can do this. We did it. We figured it out. You all figured it out.
We're getting better. I don't know if we're exactly where we need to be, but we're getting better.
No, we need to be where we need to be. So let's hear what you got, superintendent. Oh, my goodness, Principal D.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Not, not against you.
Again, a four-hour commute, but go ahead.
Well, the paperwork, you've seen the paperwork, but what I can say about the, the field trip, the proposed field trip itself, is that it's 60 kids going to Disney down in Florida over the vacation week, so no school would be missed. And I think what's most appealing about the field trip, as Rachel Lanister and Joe McCarthy explained it to me, was the emphasis on performance. So it's not just a field trip to look at things and be a passive tourist, but they will actually be performing in Saratoga Springs at the Disney Marketplace. The choir will have a performance, the band will have a performance. They'll be working with professional musicians in the studio, receiving auditioning tips. And they will also, one of the, one of the activities that Joe and Rachel designed was looking at Disney through the eyes of a musician. How is music used to tell the Disney story while they're down there? So when I hear the two of them talk about this trip, and the fact that it's not missing, students aren't missing any school time, to me, it's a wonderful opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, so questions? Kathy?
On a field trip such as this, is a nurse or an EMT or somebody with medical something, do they go? Or what are the arrangements for that?
No, part of the, part of the process is, of course, students, you know, looking at each individual's medical history. But there is not a, there is not a nurse, one of our school nurses is not going on the trip itself. There are six chaperones. Three are two music teachers, Rachel and Joe, David Bailey, who's an accompanist, and then three parents are also going on the trip.
Just related to field trips, are there circumstances under which a nurse or an EMT would go?
Yes. And actually, Lisa is right here, and Lisa perhaps can help to answer that because she just happens to be in the audience.
Yes. And it's determined on state to state. So even sending a nurse to Florida, we cannot practice in Florida without having a Florida license or reciprocity state. And we, Massachusetts does not engage currently, right now, in a compact state, they call that, where other states in this area do, where they can practice in more than one state. Other instances, when we go out of state, you can call the border health, and if it's under 24 hours sometimes, they will allow you to conduct nursing practices at that point. And then in the general of field trips, it is a case by case. So depending on if a student has diabetes, we send a nurse versus, in a different school, we may not send a nurse for the same type of diagnoses based on competency level of that student and, and nursing. So the nurses do look at the entire list of students going for every field trip and including this one. Because when I saw the list, I went, whoa, 60, whoa. And really take a, go through it with a, with a magnifying glass to make sure that we're covering our bases and that students are healthy and ready to attend.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Elaine, you had a question?
I did, and it's on the form.
That's okay.
Todd's excited about it. One of our policy things is that if any overnights, you'll be fingerprinted. And you need a check mark for that. Do you use it, say, the fingerprinting?
No, it's query.
It's just query.
It's just query check. Different.
But aren't the teachers already fingerprinting?
They would be, with three of my parents. And that was, that was one of our policy things. When we changed all that fingerprinting policy, it was just overnights needed fingerprinting.
Okay, we can take a look at that, then, do the addition to that.
We have a lot of time.
This time, yeah.
I think that's great. But it was just.
That's a great, a great catch.
We have to finish this thing.
Yeah, that's right.
Do we have any requirements as the number of chaperones versus the number of kids? Is there, is the ratio, does that matter at all?
Ten students to one chaperone. So it's 60, 61 students to 10 chaperones. They're giving that mark.
Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. The, to be determined, does that mean that the approval form is incomplete? Because we officially don't have the sixth.
What are you referencing for to be determined? The list of, oh, oh.
Yes, yeah. Mike, when they put this in, that chaperone was not determined. There was still something up there. But since that time, it has been determined. So I'll have that sixth name move forward. I think when this paperwork was submitted, there was still some questions to that.
Okay.
I've been talking to Rachel yesterday, that they have, they have nailed down that sixth person.
Okay.
And all the students have already signed up?
Paul? The 60 students have, yep, they're...
61.
Steve, that's a question. Thank you.
Yeah, I noticed that the total cost to the student is $1,800. Do we have any students who need some help with that?
Yeah, yeah. And the Friends of Music, as they always are, are very generous. But the students engaged in quite a lot of fundraising leading up to this. Simple things, well, I call them simple, but they're kind of commonplace things, such as selling fudge, car washes, two mattress sales, fundraiser at a local restaurant, a couple of local restaurants. And then Friends of Music tried to put together a bigger event. Didn't fly this time around, but I think their plan is, you know, they've learned from their mistakes and will work on it in the future. But these fundraisers certainly helped.
Are there any kids who will not be able to go because of the cost of this?
None that I'm aware of. You know, I think any student who expressed interest and worked as part of the fundraisers, Friends of Music really tried to make that happen. So, none that I'm aware of. Great question.
So, where are we going with this? Do we want to vote on the updated form?
Do we want to just make it contingent upon getting the, making sure that everyone is fingerprinted and receiving the name of the sixth chaperone?
We could do that.
Actually, rather we... It's the first time runs, the hardest.
No, I'm just growing it up there.
So, if we get the fingerprinting on there, and boom, we're done.
So, at this point, if, go ahead, Karen, Susan. The fingerprinting thing, that was something we just reviewed in policy.
Did we not vote on it? We've been reviewing that since Brooke arrived. Yeah, but I think to your point, I can see where you're going. It hasn't been finalized with the, so you're right, that final vote hasn't taken on it yet.
So, here's what we're going to do. So, if somebody wants to make a motion and wants to make it contingent because it's not impinging on any of our policies, you could, or not, right?
Well, I move that we approve this field trip to Walt Disney World for the band and chorus, contingent upon getting the sixth chaperone's name and knowing that that person has been Cory'd.
And that they have been, that anyone who's a chaperone has been fingerprinted?
We didn't, I thought we said we don't have that policy.
Yeah, because you don't have that policy.
Yeah, it's not policy.
All righty, then.
So, we don't need a policy at all?
We have a policy. So, we don't need the fingerprint?
Yeah.
But on the front of every website, at least the last time I looked, unless you've changed them, it says, "You will be fingerprinted if it's overnight."
Okay, so, wait a second. We got a motion on the floor. I'll let you talk in a second. Is there a second on this motion?
Second.
Steve?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, unless it's been changed, on the front of every website for every single school, it says, "If you're going overnight, you will be fingerprinted." If you're a chaperone for overnight.
That's true.
Because it was the volunteer, thank you.
So, let's, let's see. So, let's, why don't you, could you please explain what a Cory check is?
And, well, I think Anne Marie could probably explain that as better than anyone.
So, just give people perspective.
Sure, I think the Cory check is criminal offender record information, and that's from Massachusetts. The fingerprinting is nationwide. So, they go and someone has to, they have to go in, you have to give your fingerprints, and then it goes to the FBI, and so it encompasses the whole country. The theory was that, you know, someone could have been a bad actor in another state, and then said, "Ooh, Massachusetts, I'll go there because I don't have a record there. You know, come here and be a bad actor." So, now we have both the Cory, which we do in state, and then the fingerprint, which has a cost associated with it, and that's nationwide. It's a lengthy process, as you might imagine, because it has to go from the fingerprinting place to the FBI and back.
How do we identify people going for Cory check if we don't have fingerprints? Just their name and their social security number?
It's a process.
It is a whole process.
It's a process. So, okay, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, and the motion is to approve the field trip contingent on the sixth chaperone being identified and Cory checked. Does anybody have any other comments they want to make before we take the vote? I'm looking right at you, because I know you want to say something.
Yeah, I'm articulating, sorry, I almost say...
No, 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 it's okay, that's why I'm waiting.
I mean, particularly, you know, good catch, Lynn. You know, I realize that the policy is still being reviewed, but, you know, Lynn is right. It says on, you know, so what is the, when there is that discrepancy between something that we're saying here on the website, you know, and saying overnight field trip volunteers and chaperones must be fingerprinted. It's required, it says. And so, you know, I certainly, I don't know how long a process this is for getting fingerprints.
So, Anne Marie?
It's a couple of week-long process, but if my memory serves me, I think it was two years ago when the policy subcommittee decided to go with at least the practice, if not, if the policy wasn't adopted, at least the practice was going to be, that we wanted anyone who was going to be in a car with a student or anyone who's going to be on an overnight to also have the fingerprints.
So, Mike?
So, it's a matter of whether we're going to follow the posted policy or the stated policy, right? Posted policy in terms of the website versus...
No, that's not a policy. The policy said, the policy doesn't say that they have to be fingerprinted. There's reference to it on the website, which is not part of the current policy. But in our new revised policy that Susan and the policy team have been looking at, that will end up being part of the new policy that's voted in when all those policies are approved. So, I'm just going to throw this out there. You go ahead.
Well, I would agree with Lisa. I think, Lynn, it was a good catch on your part. And it's uncomfortable for me that we've got two things that are not in sync here. And so, I think, Lynn, your point is valid. There's a piece of me that's saying, quite frankly, there's only three people here. So, you know, I do wonder if we can't go back and ask them to get their fingerprints done right away. To me, you know, I don't know. Anne Marie, is there any way of having it expedited?
No.
No?
You're talking about the FBI. They got enough on their plates right now.
Months.
Oh, two months.
Two months.
Actually, two months.
But we need to kind of move on here, so I'm going to push this to the vote. All those in favor? Susan's, yeah, so... Oh, Susan's got something. What, you got it?
Does it say, "Just questionary"?
Another comment?
Well, there's an A. policy that Alita just gave me. That's, I mean, I'd have to read it. So, in creating the form, did you, I don't know. Like, was that taken into consideration, the overnight travel? Or was there just a disconnect between?
I'm not sure about the form. I don't think I was able to that.
I mean, I'd have to read this, but...
All right, we're going to move forward with the vote. All those in favor?
I'm just worried that they do need a fingerprint. Was that part of the...
Unless it violates the policy...
Yeah, I'm saying there's an A. policy. It's not in the overnight field trip policy. There's a policy in Section A.
Okay. Let's defer this to the next school committee meeting. I mean, we've, I mean, we've got to finish the vote, but if it fails, we can defer it. So, all those in favor? No, 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 it's fine. Three? All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. The motion fails, does not pass. So, pardon?
Susan, Lorraine, and Catherine.
Yeses?
No, I was, no.
No, was Elaine, Susan, and me? And then everyone else was no? So, we'll defer this to the next meeting.
I think in the meantime, Principal Domenico, I would suggest that we have those people go and make application for fingerprint ASAP.
You choose the form.
So, right, no, I hear. We need to get this in sync so that we don't find ourselves in this position. And you know, I don't feel bad, honestly, like this is, please don't take this, or please take this in the spirit of its intended. It's okay when we find things like this, because it gives us a chance to fix it. So, I'm not uncomfortable with this at all. I think from my, so if I can just say this super quickly, I think the process worked this time. I feel good about what's been submitted. I appreciate you coming. I feel that you were well-versed in it. So, it's nothing about presentation, it's just about a glitch right now that we need to fix. Yeah, a process. And I'm very comfortable, but in the meantime, I would speak to those three individuals and see if we can't get the fingerprint right away. Ross is third.
Even you, because we know at some point it's going to be in the policy.
It's going to be in the, that's right.
At some point, so we might as well get into the habit now.
I'm glad you caught it.
All right, moving on. Emerson Youth Risk Survey Review, no, Athletics Update. No! Please. Ms. Ranch, our athletic director extraordinaire, you've had a crazy, crazy year.
Yes.
You had a pretty impressive career.
Yeah, I think you did. Yeah, it's been good seven years.
Don't go anywhere. All right, we'll turn it over to you to talk to us about the Athletics Update Fee Review.
So, maybe a quick fall sports update. As you just mentioned, we had a very good fall season. All of our games, we had great crowds, a lot of school spirit. The kids have been picking themes for all of our games, like gets them really into it. Our golf team placed second in the league championship this year and qualified to play in the district meet. Our cross-country teams competed in both the league meet and district meet. The boys placed second in the league and seventh overall in our Central Mass District. And Alex Vitez of our girls team placed third overall in the girls' district meet. The boys soccer team improved this year. On the girls' side, they were league champions and qualified for the postseason. The volleyball team had an overall record of 17 and 5. They were league champs. They were able to host two home playoff games, which was the first time in school history. And they won one of those games, which, to date, that was the best season for them. They were very excited, so it's the first time they actually won a playoff game. They've made it, but they've never won until this season. Our field hockey team had an unbelievable year. They had an overall record of 21 and 2. They were league champions, they were Central Mass Division 1 sectional champions, and then they were state finalists. They end up losing 2 to 1 overtime in the state finals at WPI. The football team ended our fall season at Gillette Stadium. The team went 12-1 this year. They were league champions, they were Central Mass Division 4 sectional champions, and they won the Division 4 state title at Gillette. I also want to mention that I want to thank all three communities, because when we got back into Bolton that night, we had fire trucks, police cruisers, and EMS meeting us down at the business center. And we had a full escort back to school, which was amazing.
From all three towns.
All three towns were included. And that was the football team, the cheerleaders, the band, and our fan bus. Everybody joined together to get back to school that night. This fall, we had approximately 335 student athletes competing on 17 different teams. We have seen a little bit of a decrease overall in participation over the last five years. It's about 20 less students per year, but I also think that we're seeing a decrease in enrollment. So, I think that's exactly why, you know, five years ago, we were over 1,000 students, we're below. So, I think that just makes sense. 77% of our fall athletes did make the first quarter honor roll list, which I was very pleased with. So far this fall, we've had three student athletes sign letters of intent to play collegiate athletics. This was an early signing period. I see more coming this winter. In February, we have our next signing day. And then I just want to mention that the winter season has started. Fall and winter did overlap this year because of the football team going to Gillette. It's not something to complain about, it's always a good thing. Winter started, we've got 255 student athletes at the high school playing on 15 different teams. So far, teams are doing well, and, you know, as Superintendent Clenchey mentioned, the fans have been great, and their themes and everything they've been doing has been a lot of fun so far.
Awesome.
That's pretty much our...
Any questions on that record? Probably not. Congratulations.
That night, coming back from Gillette, and standing, none of the pictures I took that night at the high school worked, but it was like this purple hue with all the, seriously, with all the blue and the red lights. If you were standing back and just looking at the high school that night, it was this incre, I'm sure they could see it from space, because all the lights were...
It was amazing.
It was amazing. And, you know, being on the sidelines, of course, and watching it all starting to come together that night was just...
It was a special night.
It was a special night.
It was great. One of our Bolton police officers actually had league champions playing over the loudspeaker. So, you could hear that as everybody's standing on the buses. It was very loud.
It was just the best. It was such an incredible experience.
We started sizing the boys for their rings today, and they are beyond excited. They were running in and out of my office all day long, trying to, you know, "What size do you think? Like, you know, what finger should I wear it on?" So, that was a lot of fun today.
Thank you so much for all you do. The fee, maybe just chat a bit about the fees? And I know that we've all had communication on this, so I've mentioned our thinking to Chairman Ramazgo as well, so maybe just put your thinking out there, too.
Yeah, so, last year, as you probably were, we did raise our user fees at the high school. And now we have a three-tier system, where students pay $175 for their first sport, $150 for their second sport, and $125 for their third sport. And as, you know, talking with Pat and everyone about this so far, I think we should stay status quo moving forward, so we can still collect data and see how this works. I feel like just changing too quickly, I think we need at least one year to two years under our belts before we start looking at, you know, where to go with our fees.
And the other thing I just want to add, so appreciate the proposal. There's now a family cap, which we've been getting requests for. School committee had been getting requests for our family cap, so really appreciate the work that you did on that. So, there is no vote to be taken because there is no change. Does anybody have any questions?
There's a question of the committee. So, philosophically, are we saying that we think that athletics, because it is technically optional? I mean, I'm not trying to pick on athletics, because I think it's an important part of the student experience, but are we saying that we don't think it should be self-sustaining? Because we've gone through a series of fee increases over the last couple of months. There was kindergarten, there was lunch programs, there was extended day. In preschool, we kind of said, "Well, we're trying to get to the point where those are self-sustaining programs." So, is athletics different? Like, what has been the position on that?
I'm just going to throw something out. That's a fair question, and I think it's a good question. And I'm just going to throw something out there, and then I'm going to toss it in your laps. But when we talk about pre-K and K, we're talking about staff. And it's salaries and it's benefits. And I'm going to, I'm going to put you on the spot, I apologize, but I think your coaches are stipended. They're not on the regular rotation, that's not like, they're not making, say, they make $50,000 a year as a teacher, which isn't, that's not the average, but... So, what we're saying is if the, and I'm doing this for the rest of folks, and I know you understand it. If this year going into next year, it's a 2% increase on their salary, then we're looking at recuperating that 2%. But that's not what happens with the stipends. And how often do those stipends increase? Are they annual?
Yes.
They are?
But it's smaller. And you also need to keep in mind that we also receive gate receipts. We bring in monies from other places. So, that's why we feel comfortable right now. The increase is just not enough to warrant this year making changes. Would that be, is that a fair way of saying it?
Okay, Lynn. The gate receipt.
Well, even the gate receipts, I would like to ask if the stipends are, do we supplement the stipends, or are the stipends self-sustaining?
I think that's what Elaine just asked.
Right.
Yeah, I've probably thought about it from the salary and benefits perspective before, but it would be interesting to see that break out moving forward.
It would be really awful if the money coming in, if the stipend was much larger than the money coming in. That would not make sense.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also thinking about things like the athletic fields coming up, you know, there are...
Well, the fields are there. You know, there's the maintenance of them, and that would be the gate receipts and everything, which is what we've been talking about. But as far as stipends go, I mean, if we've got, you know, 15 sports in the winter and 17 in the fall, and if the stipends are, you know, I don't know, what do they mark? Five, $10,000?
Well, they're in the contract.
No, 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 not at all. No, because you and you and you and you would want...
And see the salary schedule for stipends. And it's all determined in their budget as such.
So, just out of curiosity, if a teacher was on the higher-end scale of the pay scale and a teacher on the lower-end scale, so would the higher-end scale get a higher stipend?
No, because it's in the contract.
All the same.
Yeah. Look at the salary schedule for stipends.
So, do the fees cover the stipends, or are we supplementing them?
We're supplementing them. Stuff is in our budget, and then between gate receipts and our user fees, that's what we use to offset and pay certain things.
So, we're not supplementing the budget for the stipends?
You're not supplementing the stipends out of the budget, is what you're asking?
Yes, thank you.
I don't know if you have that answer.
I think...
I don't have the detail in front of me, and I don't feel comfortable answering. I can...
Think you can take a look back.
So, why, can you do that? Can you figure that out and then come back and let us know?
I can tell you exactly where the stipends come from.
And maybe show us a two or three, three-year trend? Does that work? Does that work for you guys? Yeah? Okay, all right, thank you. So, at this point, we may call you back, but at this point, I think, thank you for coming, and I appreciate all the work that you've done.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Hadiya.
We're moving on to the Emerson Youth Risk Survey Review.
And we're bringing Lisa Combacki to the table to...
I'm sorry.
So, I think you all know Lisa, and she's going to do a bit of a broad overview and just highlight some of the salient points, some of the things, some of the areas that we're taking a closer look at, some of the things that we're looking at doing some different programming with. So, Lisa, we'll turn it over to you to start to go through quickly.
Great, thanks. Just a little history. This is the first year we're using this research company. Have you noticed a big difference from years in the past? I need a magnifying glass to see even with my reading glasses and some of these data. So, it took me a little bit of time to get through, but it is different this year, so the format is quite different. I'm not going to go through, obviously, every slide. There's a lot of, I'm sure you spent the entire week in reading it. There are nine districts that are participating in this. We do it every other year for those that are not familiar with it. And this report, and when it refers to aggregate data, refers to results of all the surveys in the district, meaning the nine districts, not just ours as well. So, we did try to do, we try to do it every year on the same date as the other districts as well. This year was a challenge for all districts, because there was a lot of snow. We had a lot of snow dates around this time, believe it or not, in the March week. So, we had to continue to keep making the arrangements. It was supposed to be done at the end of February. So, we do sixth grade, eighth grade, and then ninth through 12. For Neshova, we did 1,345 students that participated. The way this format looks like is they have questions. The question numbers are on the bottom. What grades participate in it and the questions that are there. I have more detailed questions if you need any of those. Again, like I said, it's a new research company this year, so it looks quite different. So at a glance, um, this... We're gonna talk about these as we go through. So I'm just gonna skip over that unless somebody has any specific questions. These were recommendations that they made of certain things. The only recommendation we had, I felt, at the high school is we did it first thing in the morning, and we had students that chose not to come in and start their day after, knowing that it was almost like a student opt-out. Not to say that we're gonna change that in two years from now, but that was an observation that we made within our own district.
Can we comment as... Do you want us to comment as you go along? Or do you want to wait till the end?
Yeah, as long as we don't dog-like, sure.
No, I was, um... Because I hooked at page nine, and it's the recommendation for future. If nothing can be done, drop issue from YRBS. And then focus on behaviors the districts can address. So I don't know how they... It is determined if nothing can be done. And then the other thing, focusing on behaviors that the district can address and conversations that I have been a part of regarding the survey, many of the items, not many of the behaviors, at-risk behaviors, are not... They happen outside of school. And there's a question about how much can a school district, a school, address them?
Alone.
Alone. But the... But cutting things out concerns me, looking at the at-risk behaviors. Because I think that this is of value to us, but it's an also important and valuable communication to parents. And so I don't know the extent to which parents will be able to digest this and ask questions if there are parent nights or any of that stuff.
That's a really... No, I'm doing it. Okay. But if there was a way for the district, Lisa, you, whomever, to put together a one-page overview of what were the key takeaways from this survey and distribute that to the parents, I think that would be really, really helpful. And I hate to put you on the spot, but I really do think that this is something that it's... We do this, we cycle through this every few years. It is a big deal. People reference it, and then they contact us, and where do I find it?
Just the whole thing about vaping. Now, I got the impression that the parents that spoke, you know, obviously are concerned, but it's in our lap. Why? Are we giving the kids money to buy vape? Oh, I'm not gonna go there. You know what I'm saying? All right? But in the same thing with drinking and texting and driving, it all seems to end up in our lap. And I think sometimes that's because people don't know what to do. And is it... What is the approach to dealing with it? It should be a community approach. And that we should play a role in that. But... And again, it comes up, you know, I've been seeing this ever since it came out. But anyway, go ahead.
So thank you for that. We're gonna let you move on. But I think if you could, given the work that you folks have done with your community, open houses on this kind of thing, I think it'd be really helpful to... It's just another way that you're reinforcing the work that's being done.
Yeah, every parent should read this.
Yeah.
In some form that they can understand. Every parent needs to read it.
Yep, so give us a...
It will be available on the website as it is every two years. It's put on the... Under Health Services.
But you know what? But you know what? I'm a parent of a second grader. My oldest kid is a second grader. And I think that, for me, I'm like, I don't get this. I don't even know what this means. So the takeaways of... Like, I see what they're saying for recommendations, but even that doesn't tell me much. It's like, these are the things that we need to be aware of. These are the things that we have seen trends changing, and this is what the district's doing as a result of it. And I think you could do that really quick.
Excellent.
Thanks, Sarn. Moving on.
That's okay. I skipped over the demographics.
Yeah, let's get to the... Get to the stuff.
We'll get to the meat of the stuff rather than, you know, the grades. I'm sure, again, this will be available to all, not to go through every slide. The demographics are up there as well. This is... We're keeping about the same as the medium of sleep that kids are getting. We changed the question a little bit this year. The sleep question was changed in 2016, adding each school night, not just so it's the whole week. So how much are you receiving each school night? Not during the week. And it was a medium of six to seven hours. How much homework are we saying? Again, around two to three hours. Those that are in more accelerated classes are gonna stay longer. Those that do not do homework are gonna stay less. Again, it's a medium. And then screen time was, again, it's remaining the same that we've seen over the years. Looking at some of this, we... Out-of-school time activities, again, also your athletics that we were just talking about. And we have seen 87% of our students are actually saying them. And that's not just athletics. It's clubs, bands, orchestra, choir, and things like that.
How's that compared to the state, Lisa?
83% for the rest of the aggregate. I don't know the entire straight. I just looked at the aggregate. But for the other 19, that's really good. We're 87.
That's really good.
It is. We're really... We're in line through this whole report. I feel like I'm just gonna keep saying the same thing. We're right on line with the aggregate data of all the other communities. If not, we're ahead. We might be just a little bit below on some of them.
And who's our... Who's... Who are we? Who are cohorts?
We have... We are Acton, Foxborough, Air Shirley, Conca Kyle, Groton Dunstable, the Bromfield School, Littleton Public Schools, Littleton High School, Mained Public, Neshova Us, and Westford Academy.
Oh, wow, that's great. Okay, moving on.
Does that give you...
Thank you.
Yeah?
I want people to hear.
Oh, okay.
I know that parents don't have time to necessarily read through all this, and it's overwhelming. Okay.
Yep. Breakfast and caffeine. Again, we're maintaining what we're seeing every year. Caffeine's still kind of up there, which is, you know, we're... I guess we're running on Dunkin', so it's... It's maintaining the same that we're seeing. We're seeing a little bit of a decrease in eighth grade, but sixth in high school with the caffeinated beverages, which can mean coffee, ripples, and such. It's then broken down to seven sections. Those were just the key highlights for them. But then we go into... We group them together. Wearing helmets, wearing seatbelts, and impaired driving. Again, we're doing a great job. The kids are wearing helmets. Obviously, the lower grades, we're seeing them more. As they get into high school, they get a little bit more risky and don't use their helmets as much. But definitely wearing them during skiing and snowboarding. And we're seeing that also with our seatbelt use as well, which is really impressive to see that our students are reporting that they're wearing their seatbelt almost always. Again, we're right on line with the aggregate data everywhere else. The impaired driving portion of it is we're seeing more of cellphone use. If you look at the last two boxes there, draw while... Sorry. Draw while using a cellphone. Sometimes, most of the time, or always in the past 30 days, we're not getting a big reporting on that. But then when we're reporting against people that we're driving with, we're seeing a higher increase. So it makes... Just something to be aware of if we're moving on.
They don't want to get caught in it.
If we're texting, that's just that thumbs up. Maybe we're not viewing it as that we're on our cellphone. But when somebody's in the car, they're saying that people are doing that. Just to keep that in mind. So we're gonna go to, um...
Do you have a question? One second, Lisa. Do you have a question on water?
Do you want me to go back to something or...
No, but that's okay. I mean, it's... I'm seeing a pattern here. What I'm seeing is a disconnect. And I don't know how you are supposed to fix it or even address it. But the ca... I was looking at the caffeine. And I know that... And I've got a child in middle school, and I know that her friends drink coffee. And I don't promote it or anything. So there's like a... There's a... I'm seeing a disconnect. And so I don't...
What's the disconnect?
Well, how do you... I mean, you're not gonna take a cup of coffee away for... A kid walks into school with a Dunkin'. I mean, you're not gonna take it away.
That's not illegal.
No, it's not. But is it a problem? You know, is drinking caffeine a problem for a developing child? I mean, I have no idea.
Yep, well...
Well, are we saying that it is? You know, well, and here's the question. So is that... There's the disconnect. It's like, we're saying, oh, they drink coffee. Okay, is that good or bad? I don't know.
That's a judgment call, I think.
I'm just using the coffee one because I know it, and it caught my eye. I mean, but almost every single one of them is the same. You know, using the phone, using the texting, you know, using a seatbelt. There's a disconnect. And I don't, you know, back to what Kathy said. Okay, so we the police? And we... What do you do? How do you make people aware?
I think that's a really good point. One of the takeaways that I had after pointing through this, and this is... It's a very big survey. I agree with Elaine that everyone should read this.
We're on section one, right?
Well, yeah. This is even... This is page 14, that so many of these are interconnected, and so many serve as predictors for other behaviors, right? Lower grades, higher risk of experiencing physical violence and engaging in risky activity. So I don't know the answer to that. But I do know that there... It's sort of a web of interconnectivity. And that some of these things on the surface might seem like they are things that the suggestion was to maybe delete things that we can't control, but they do serve as data points. And I think that that's a really important takeaway from this, is that it's such a comprehensive survey. And I mean, I even had a conversation at home about all of these things that were... That one related to the next and related to another. And that the idea is to minimize this. And so then my follow-up question, if I can, this is to you, is in what way do the results drive dissemination of... Into the curriculum, professional development, building policy, counseling? I mean, how does this get tied into actual schools and in our role as a district?
Should we come back to that question at the end of the whole presentation? Because I think that's more all-encompassing. So don't... I'm not saying...
Understood.
Just let's get through the data, and then those broader philosophical questions we'll ask.
Okay. Are we good?
Yep.
All right. Again, stress staying the same that we've seen over the years, that obviously students are reporting. You know, school is their stressor, so to, you know, so to speak. But it is. They're also their full-time job. I guess to answer those questions of what are we gonna do to help people deal with that stress when it's right before an exam and things like that? And that's something that we do work on.
Not just before an exam, though.
But I...
Yeah.
One example. One example to move on, to get through the data and then answer those questions after. So what are students reporting? That they're doing exercise, watching TV, and eating to reduce some of that stress level. And then we're going to depression and suicide. Again, leveling off on that. I'm going to say that since we've taken these in 2002, actual attempt at suicide has declined. But in Neshova, since joining, we joined the Emerson survey in 2012 and then do it every two years. The levels have generally remained stable, as you can see there. So we're not seeing an increase or decrease. They're pretty much staying stable. Again, consistent with the aggregate data on there. Is worry about peers harming themselves. They're reporting 50/50/50 of a seek. Was told by peers and did tell an adult, and then some are saying that they didn't. And it's kind of 50/50 on there if they're gonna tell somebody or not. And that goes back to that trusted adult that we're at 75%. Self-injury. What we mean by that is it's cutting, burning, or bruising themselves. Again, we're seeing the same data that we've pretty much seen, except for eighth grade. Eighth grade, there was a dip, and it increased a little bit. But 87% are saying that they're not injuring themselves.
I have a question about the trusted adults. So the percentage of students that said they had a trusted adult went up since they got older in the school?
Went up since they got older.
Which I... Was counterintuitive to me. Why do you think that is the case, that kids in high school feel...
Because they know. Paul should probably speak to that.
I think they're doing like more risky behaviors in terms of the severity of risk of things that the high schoolers might be doing than the middle schoolers. I always thought that the younger the kid, the more open the relationship was.
They're building relationships, though, in high school. They've got four years and the same staff members. You're building relationships there. So they're building trust with the same people.
Plus, I mean, I had a situation several years ago. I think I don't even think I was on the school committee. And I had to... I talked to one of the principals because of a situation with a student. And it was very confidential. And he connected that student with a teacher that he thought that the student might be responsive to. And over the course of a couple of years, they became... I mean, it was just like watching out for the kids. So I would think that that... I mean, I was surprised. I mean, I just shared it because I don't know where to go with it. I don't want to do anything whatever with the information. And that's how the... It was almost like it's just that's the way we do it, you know? We find a trusted someone that the kid might respond to.
I'm not sure why that would happen in middle school.
I don't know that it doesn't.
I know it's a difficult time, but...
I don't know that it doesn't, though.
Isn't there more like in the middle school advisory? Do you have advisory at the middle school? Do you have advisory at the high school? And those are relatively new. And the purpose of those is for the students to have an adult that is their appoint person. And then some kids, as Mike said, develop relationships with certain teachers. And teachers often see the child that is not with anybody and reach out. often see the child that is not with anybody and reach out. So there's a lot in that dynamic going on. And when kids are, and this only starts in sixth grade and that's when the kids start having multiple teachers.
Yeah, I just thought it was interesting because like Lynn was talking about what, or you were talking about, what role does the school actually play? What can we control versus what can't we control?
Right.
It seems like a relationship with an adult and in reporting behaviors and trusting with behaviors, that might be something that the schools can address?
Yep.
Yeah.
Social media, as we know, we're on social media quite a lot with accounts. 17% of Neshova youth said they have social media accounts that parents or guardians don't know about. That doesn't mean that they, you know, for example, they're asking any social media. So parents may be aware that they have Instagram but may not realize that they opened up a Facebook account. So it's not just that they don't have, they don't understand that they're on social media at all. So just wanted to clarify that. And also 22% of the Neshova youth at some point found themselves in unwanted or risky situations because of the information that they shared electronically. We know we don't always think before we send and that could be part of it as well. Sexting is another one, slightly higher than the aggregate, involves electronic sending or receiving sexually explicit messages. 21% of the Neshova surveyed admitted to sexting in the past year. Pornography was another one that was asked and again, that's remained the same as it's been in the past. 32% of youth surveyed said that they have looked at pornographic materials in the past 30 days. Again, with social media, things pop up very quickly, which can contribute to some of that with their honesty of that. Online fantasy football, that's remaining the same. It became popular for a while and it's kind of still there. Bullying, again, we're somewhat maintaining, 7% of youth said they'd been bullied during the year and 2% said they had bullied others. Again, we've maintained at the high school, the same level. Eighth grade, on a few of these, it seems in 2004, there was a dip, went up and it's back down again to where we need to be. Cyberbullying, again, we're down in Neshova compared to the aggregate data for the other districts. We're saying about 5% of Neshova youth surveyed said that they personally have been cyberbullied and 1% admitted to bullying others.
Kind of impressed that kids were admitting to it.
Right.
Honestly, that means they know it's wrong.
And we're on section five here, we're moving right along. Violence. There we go. And then feeling safe at school and our students are reporting that. We're a little higher than the aggregate in certain grades, but definitely for the overall the same. Being hurt physically, sexually, in the content of alcohol or the drugs, that means if we're under the influence of drugs and alcohol. For Neshova, 23 youth reported experiencing physical violence and situations involving alcohol or drugs and 7 youth reported. A total high school is just at 2%. And then we're going to sexual behavior. Again, we're slowly declining on sexual intercourse and also use of contraceptives has remained the same as well. Oral sex has remained the same as well within our youth in the schools. And then again, asking the question if a parent at home is talking about sexual transmitted diseases or HIV, are talking to the youth. And again, sixth grade is reporting a high incidence that they're not getting information at home over the past month and it's again, remains somewhat the same. There's not a lot to report on that. So our last is tobacco, alcohol and drug use, which as we heard earlier from Citizens Report, there was a concern and we are seeing the numbers here as well. Again, not surprised in our district, which is why we were acting as a district as a whole to address these issues before we even receive this data because we're hearing what other communities are facing. We're all in the same boat, so to speak. So huffing again is at an all time low. Cigarette smoking continues to go down, but as we know that that went down, the nicotine use has gone up with the vaping. Chewing tobacco again has gone down or stayed the same. And then this is the data that we're seeing a climb in is your vaping. So we note that vaping has doubled since 2016 in the aggregate as well. We're seeing that across, our aggregate, we're seeing it across the nation. We're also seeing it across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In for Neshova, other than tobacco, the two substances Neshova youth surveyed, the most vaping included flavored nicotine and marijuana products. And we added those questions to the survey this year to break it down a little bit more than rather than just e-cigarettes or vaping because we didn't have those questions. So when you look at some of the questions and why do we eliminate and why did it bring some in? The research company was really instrumental in making sure that we didn't change the validity of some of our questions so our data would still continue over time. Some of the questions that we really felt needed to be removed were just really outdated. Steroid use was one of them that we're not seeing that and we continue to see over the years, not just the Emerson survey, but it was one of those that just felt that it wasn't needed to be asked anymore. It hasn't changed in 15, 20 years. So it was one of those that as a group. And we are meeting next month with the research firm and the group that worked on these to stop planning for the following years and also to go through this data. Alcohol consumption again is going down as well or maintain the stamens in some instances. So alcohol consumption has declined steadily over the past decade, particularly among high school youth. And the, this data that they supplied first is what the perception of students feel that others are doing. And again, that's just perception of if they feel that other people are actually consuming alcohol and/or consuming marijuana. And for the marijuana, at some point in their lives, 13% have done so in the past 30 days. 5% of eighth and 12th grades have used marijuana on school property for their report and 4% of high school youth have used some form of synthetic marijuana in the past 30 days. Again, the next one is just their beliefs about their peers doing that. And then as far as other drugs or cocaine, they are on, cocaine has declined steadily over the past 15 years for the aggregate and for us, as well as other illicit drugs is not widespread in school districts, particularly in this survey that they've seen. And what they mean by other drugs is methamphetamines, heroin, MDMA's and stuff. And misuse of prescription, some are reporting again, 8% of youth surveyed at some point in their lives used someone else's prescription. And then the other 7% is that they've taken more of their own. And then they gave us reasons here for misusing prescription medications and to help reduce stress, to complete my schoolwork, et cetera. And again, yep.
Are we on, am I on 75? Okay, wow. So I don't even know what to say about this chart.
This one?
This is upsetting to me. To help reduce stress, to complete my schoolwork. I don't know what the heck other reasons are, I caught it. I don't blame, and I want to make it really clear, I don't blame the schools, nor do I blame the district on help to reduce stress and help to complete my schoolwork, but it just reinforces.
Now keep in mind that you're looking at, like make sure you read that above, that paragraph above to make sure that the connection is there.
Yep. Less than 2% of Neshova youth surveyed have misused specific anxiety and/or opiate medications with the most popular choices being Xanax and Oxycontin. Neshova youth who misuse prescription drugs have a variety of reasons for doing so, most often to reduce stress. And that 71% is why they do it, not that that percent is doing that.
I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about the 71, that they're saying, I'm doing it to reduce stress. Whoever it is that's saying it is saying, I'm doing it.
But we only have 2% that are using it.
I know.
Right.
I know, but that 2%.
Average 2% of 71% of others. Same, right. That they're using it to, for to reduce stress. It's not 71% of students in the district are using prescriptions to reduce.
But if the aggregate also 2%, I can't find that.
Mm-mm.
I realize it's a percentage of a percentage, but if the aggregate percentage is.
You want to look on the left side for the specific opiate and anxiety medications that they're using and then yes, the aggregate is underneath, but the aggregate is only 951 and we're 93 that reported. That's your 2% is the 93.
Yeah, I understand. Again, it's a percentage of a small percentage, but we're still way over indexing. I'm trying to be, other schools.
The reasons why.
Yes.
The reasons why. That's what I'm concerned about is the reasons why. And again, one second Lynn, and again, it's not, I don't, I do not, I do not think this is the school's fault. I do not think this is district's fault. I think it's a, part of it is a function of the community that we live in too and the pressures and the stressors. But I would really love to see more done on that whole stress issue.
So these are prescriptions everyone. So are these prescribed to the kids or are they going out and finding their own self-medication?
Or their parents or whatever. Misuse, so it's misuse.
It is, I mean, it could have been prescribed to them if they're misusing them.
Correct.
We don't know. We don't know what's the whole of it.
It could also be like a family thing. And so I'm back to my question of, you know, it goes to what you're saying. I mean, there's a disconnect where there's just way too much information to throw at parents for this thing. And it's, okay, so how does this affect me? And as benign as caffeine is or isn't, I wouldn't know as a parent, okay, should my child not be taking caffeine? I mean, and I keep saying caffeine, it's probably the lesson, well, legal's here, but.
But they're all addressed in our health education curriculum. So as we see, caffeine is addressed. I spoke with Matt at the high school, which is great that he's going to be sitting and revamping the health curriculum. But saying that, that was one of his concerns, which is probably why I highlighted, because we just had the conversation last week when I was, you know, checking in to make sure that we're addressing all these issues in their health curriculum. And they are, and we're also looking at studying at a younger age. So caffeine is addressed. It's also addressed for those healthy choices that we want students to make and making, and having those less risky behaviors. And what happens, and I'm going to go to a little bit of that caffeine or the vaping, we always have, we have, the foundations are to discuss those healthy choices in all of our health education classes as well as our PE classes that address these issues. And then there's always those fires to put out and vaping is one of them right now.
I think, Lisa, I'm going to have to interrupt you, but I think what Lynn is getting at is, but the kids are learning that and that's what we're sharing with them, but the parents are not necessarily, is that part, I mean, the parents are not aware of the issues that the kids are learning and, and I understand the parents aren't in school and I understand that, that we're, you know, we're probably going to be asking you to do something to help parents across the district, but I think, is that, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, well, that's the disconnect. I mean, it's like, it's not all on us. I mean, these are either learned behaviors or something that's sought out through, you know, the peers that, you know, hey, try this, this will help you, but I kind of have to believe as a young kid. But even this, less than 2%, I'm wondering how many of these have been, I mean, are these known prescriptions? Like we know that less than 2% of the school is on these medications to begin with?
No, we don't know that.
You're not going to know that.
Well, actually.
These are self-reporting. These kids are self-reporting.
No, and I get that, but according to the policy that we just did on this stuff, I mean, they can't bring anything into school. So I mean, this is all, even if it works.
But this isn't saying you're doing it at school. Right? Okay, Kathy, go ahead.
Okay, a couple of things, please bear with me.
She said it to me.
No, the whole. This is the first time that this new administrative team has, in this district, has had to respond to this, the youth risk behavior survey. And it's a lot of information, it's very dense. I think Lorraine might have said, you know, so what do we do with this? And so you can put the whole thing out there, but an executive summary that is created by you folks would go a long way. The other thing is that there are a lot of things, just talked about the curriculum. We have the mental health first aid. I mean, there are a number of things that are already in place, even the vaping. There was a district-wide, three meetings, 33 people came. So I think to let folks know what the district has in place, what the district has done, what we will continue to do is important. The other thing is that there's a correlation. There's a group that tends to get buried in districts like this. And I kept seeing it over and over again with the at-risk behaviors. Those students most likely to engage our kids with low grades, lack of engagement. It is all, there's a list that, of characteristics, that these are the kids that tend to be most at risk. And I bring it up when we look at the MCAS scores. You've got that small percent of kids who are not making effective progress. And at some point, to have a conversation, to do a deep dive on what that means and who's involved. Because unfortunately, when you look at those characteristics, many times, these are the kids who don't have a trusted adult, whose parents are not there for them for whatever reason. And as a school district, I feel that we have a responsibility to those kids because they're the ones that are most at risk for the drugs, for the, I mean, it's all there. So I don't know how to address it. It has never been addressed, as far as I know, in this district before in a way that really, I'll use the word made sense, but it's, that's the dilemma we have. A lot of these things, prescription drugs, we're not handing them out at the door, you get them somewhere, you may get them at school, so they may pass to you, but, but again, people are asking us as educators for guidance, advice and what are we going to do? And it's a big pile of stuff to deal with. But it's, it's just to me, it's just as important to start to address it as it is to make sure that kids have the academic skills, they need to be successful. And it's not going to happen, I don't see it happening in a month or a year, but to begin to take a chunk, chunk this out, to address it.
Yes.
I think Lisa's.
Yeah, it's fine.
Well, I mean, Kathy, you said a lot of what I would want to say, you know, but I think what's really critical with these, it's, I mean, all the rich detail is really important, but not to get so bogged down into individual data points, but look at it holistically. Because when I think about, you know, caffeine, it's like, yeah, well, caffeine doesn't really matter, but if you have a bunch of kids, for example, that are drinking a ton of coffee because they're exhausted, because they're doing so much homework or they're not getting enough sleep, or, and then you have kids who say, I'm using drugs because I'm stressed. And you have other kids who say, school is my biggest stressor. And of course it is, like, I think it was Todd who said that, it's, or whoever said it was their full-time job. Of course, that's the biggest stressor. But when you start to put all those pieces together and you say, is there a culture or is there something going on with a certain group of kids who, especially in a high achieving district like we are, where stress is contributing to a whole host of behaviors or anxiety about, you know, whatever, about school. And to continue to use those data points as we make decisions that seem, you know, I don't even want to, almost want to say this out loud, I'll probably get yelled at.
All right.
School, school districts around the country, for example, are pushing back start times for middle school and high school. And they're finding that kids are now getting nine or 10 hours of sleep and their academics are improving, you know? And so some of these things I think need to feed into, as Kathy was saying, those bigger discussions about what are, what are some things that we can start to talk about or things that we can start to change that address, you know, some of the things that were brought up tonight in Citizens comments, some of these community concerns, but also using this to feed into richer conversations with our communities. Because I know we have the vaping conversations, vaping keeps coming up and only 33 parents came. And that doesn't mean that parents don't care about vaping, but did we ask parents first, you know, what would be the format that you would want this in or how do you want this information? I'm not saying we didn't, that's a legitimate question. And maybe there was some reason why, you know, parents didn't come. And it's not because they didn't care or they didn't want to know, but for whatever reason, something didn't work out right. You know, and so if we have more of those community conversations, what, you know, how can we sort of have these dialogues as communities? Because was it Kathy or Lynn, both of you that said, it's not just the school district, it is a community responsibility. But we need to be talking to each other in order to make that happen, I think.
All right. So Mike, you had a question. Do you feel it's, no, it hasn't been. So, and I don't know that we're going to get the answer right now, but go ahead.
Right. So my question several minutes ago was just really to the point of others that have spoken, but to what extent does, does the district use this data to affect change? Whether it's curriculum or whether it's, hey, as a counselor to a high school student, these are the kinds of conversations we need to start having, we need to phase these in. How do we inform teachers about what's happening? I'm looking on page eight, that there's an at a glance. So if we look at the, if we look at the aggregate data for vaping and marijuana consumption, that's 99 and 118, we're 50% higher than the aggregate. Right, so the aggregate is 20% of students in the high school, 30%?
The high schools, but the aggregate is including all of the grades, so the Neshova total is right on target, we're both at 20%. So if you look at the second column after the aggregate.
The second column is a district.
Data is all of Neshova district. The aggregate is all of the districts. So the next three is, it singled out six, eight and then the high school. But if you look at the aggregate of some of the other districts, their high schools are probably at 30% as well.
Okay.
So just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
We're right on the aggregate. We're seeing this across everywhere. There's not a, there's not a school meeting that you go to in another district that's not addressing the same issues that we're seeing.
Okay, so fair point, but how, how do we, is it a passive survey where we're just sort of saying, here's what snapshot of our district and our kids.
No, I don't think so at all. And I could take that and maybe Paul, you might want to add something to this, Lisa, you can certainly fill in, but so there are a number of different ways. I don't think that, that this has ever, I just speak for the two and a half years I've been here, but this has never been a survey that has shelved and never seen the light of day. We refer to it consistently. And you know, whether it's changes like you, if you heard Lisa speak earlier, talking to Matt Edinger about, you know, how's this playing out, how can we make, how does this help us to drive our curriculum at the high school, make changes? So I think we consistently use, and for me, now I could be wrong, but I see this as a document that is ever supporting changes that we're making in the district. I don't think it's ever, and I think even our principals would say, it's never a document that just sits and gathers dust. So for Neshova, it's something that is alive consistently.
So to be clear, I wasn't suggesting that.
No, I know, but it gives me a chance to say that, so thank you.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm just saying how.
We've had some small working groups at the high school currently when the data came out, but we, and again, it's been within the walls of certain rooms just to start peeling this away, because again, as you can see, there's a lot to go through. We had a meeting with some administrators at the high school and the next, if you want to speak about the next level that's going to happen there.
So what Lisa's referring to, Michael, is I asked my assistant principals, my athletic director, my guidance director to look at this information for a day, just try to spot trends, to look at the predictors that you were speaking of. And then I have a second group that I work with, it's the cultural and climate group that came and met with the subcommittee on policy. And this is a group of guidance counselors, health teachers, classroom teachers, school psychologists. They've looked at it as well. And today we were planning for our January 3 faculty meeting, an activity that we can take this staff, use it with staff, break it down in digestible pieces for teachers. And to look at the question that I think Elaine had posed, what can we control? How does this directly relate to, you know, the six and a half hours that we have kids in our school each day? And what can we do? Can we move those predictors? Can we work with kids that, there's 15, 85% of the kids have a trusted adult in the building? Well, can we identify those other 15%, the other 15% of students who don't and try to work on that? What does that look like in a classroom? I think there are a lot of good programs out there and we've certainly brought some of them in this year. I think of the MVP program in health, I think of the challenge day program, but it can't just be left up for a special program. It's really, has to be woven into what we're doing on a daily basis with kids.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, I want to wrap this guys really quick. We are, we have got a jam-packed agenda. If we need to revisit this again, we will, but make it really quick. Something's already been said, let's not reiterate it. You've got something new, share.
So this is basically, it talks about damaging behaviors, whether they're illegal or not, right? So I agree with most of what Kathy says, but it's not just at-risk kids. I mean, based on stuff that we've had before, it all comes down to the kids that have something to lose are the ones that have the consequences. It's a totally different conversation about, you know, cause and effect, do you do this? But mostly this is about damaging behaviors, not only being illegal, but again, as a parent, I don't know what caffeine does to a kid.
All right.
It's another.
So, so your point is taken. No, I'm not shutting you down, just saying at this point, we're kind of talking circular, we're kind of saying the same thing. So you have something and then.
My only, my only comment is, we're only part of the solution and.
And right.
And we're, and we're working at that part of the solution, but once again, I have to refer to the, you know, the big vaping thing because that's in the news these days and everybody.
Well, that's because it's happening.
I know it's happening. And everybody is getting, you know, all up in arms, well, what are you going to do about that? What are you going to do? We're only part of the possibility of what has to be done. There has to be other participants with us to, who have grasped some of the things in this study, who take some of the other parts of responsibility.
So I think where we've landed is if y'all can come back and explain to us or share with us what your approach is going to be in order to address some of this. And then I would respectfully ask on behalf of the school committee, I think, I got head nods, that we prepare some type of an overview. that we prepare some type of an overview for parents, so they can understand. And I think, Lisa, you're, you know, I'm not going to suggest this, I, I mean, I'm actually, I'll wait, because I don't want to create a storm over here, but, you know, for parents who are interested, maybe they, they have a place to go to make phone calls and ask. And if you see, you know, a mask, then, then think of something else. But I think we just need to wait, hear from you folks, you've heard all the comments here, where do we go, where do you go from here? Where do we, as a group, go from here? And how do we engage?
The last comment I'd make is just, I think you, you hit it right on the head, we've been proactive consistently. And so, I mean, what we can do is, we can come back with an executive summary, and we can come back and say, here's the work that we're doing, these are the things that are ongoing, so I think that we can, we can certainly bring that up.
All right, thank you so much. And I really appreciate the comments around the table. All right, we're going to move into the digital learning update, or the MSBA SOI update, and then we're going to talk about what we're doing with digital learning, and I know you folks are here for that.
So what are we doing first?
Let's do the SOI, let's make sure that-
Oh, okay, the SOI, okay, so, I, I won't, I don't think that I necessarily need to read the letter on air, unless, you don't really need that for me to do that.
Just give us an overview.
The overview, in essence, basically, is that we were denied for this particular go-round of, and I, I sent all of you an email earlier about that. What was said to, what was said to me, because they called me first, and then they sent the, the email out later. They said that they, they would not suggest that we change anything on the SOI. They said, if the question comes up, was the SOI enough, the answer is yes. If they said, if the question comes up, was the tour enough, or do we need to do something different, the answer is no, the tour was absolutely spot-on, there's nothing else, it was enough, so we don't need to do anything more with that. So, in essence, if we want to move forward, she said to me, you know, really, you could take that exact same SOI, change the dates, change the first, fresh signatures, and resubmit right away to us. I'm not so sure that that's how I would like to approach it, because we've had the oil tank, we've had a couple of other things that I would like to add now to it. But I, I don't want to move ahead without your support. I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to make the changes, and then bring back in late January, for example, January 30th or February, because it's not due until April, but we might as well, if this is what we want to do, then please give me the direction tonight, I will go back and make some revisions, and then I will bring it to you for full submission with all the appropriate language sometime in late January, February, if you would like me to go forward. The only thing, she said honestly, the only thing is that there were a couple of schools kind of ahead that just had a little bit greater urgency.
They go through the queue more than one, like, this is not unusual that you-
Absolutely not.
You go through the queue.
I'm incredibly proud, as I sit here tonight, saying what I'm saying. We don't have to do anything more. She said, we recognize your need, we recognize the urgency, and that's really what we're looking for. So I feel very, very good about where we're at. You're absolutely right. I, I put forward, I would recommend that we do this again, just with some, some minor changes to the SOI.
So, I move to authorize the administration to prepare the MSBA SOI for Neshoba Regional High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
At least, anybody have, okay, make them pertinent. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I would just say, maybe we don't have to submit it too early, because there's probably a chance something else happened in the meantime that we want to add, so.
Do we necessarily lose anything by, I mean, is there anything to gain by not doing it, or to lose by doing it again? I don't think that there is.
What?
Correct?
Was there anything to lose?
Is there, is there anything to lose by submitting it again, or to gain by not submitting it? Right, so you're saying, with your permission, that, you know, let's move forward, but why, why wouldn't we? I guess that's my question.
Honestly, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't. I think that our communities recognize our need, I mean, I hear that when I'm out and about. People know where we're at, and I, I think that there's good news with this, quite frankly, because to your point, it gives another year where other things will happen, and I can, we can just kind of keep track of it, and it just helps to further build our case.
All right. All those in favor?
Right, thank you very much.
unanimous, thank you, moving on. Okay, so, here's the deal. It is almost 8 o'clock by our, by the count here, and that's not even taking questions on the digital learning update. We have at least another 40 minutes, plus an executive session. So you guys have to decide if you can, I'm sure, assuming the entire school committee has reviewed the document, I'm assuming if you have questions or comments, they're queued up. I'm hoping so, for the digital literacy. And if we move forward with this, I'm going to ask that you just hit the highlights, so that it allows us to ask some of the questions, and it may mean we need you to come back, because I'm going to have to time-box it.
And we'll bring Joel and Laura, we're also key components in this, so feel free to join us at the table if you'd like to. And Todd, we'll turn it over to you to hit the salient points.
Good, so I've included the presentation in your packet that I'm going to roll through. I've also, very similar to the communication plan that I prepared for you earlier in the fall, it's a same setup in terms of what we are currently doing, in terms of moving ahead, and in terms of also a timeline, so I wanted those to, to match for you. And then I've also included an article that Joel Bates provided for all of us, from the International Data Corporation, which has partnered with Google on the economic value of Chromebooks for educational institutions. It's leisure reading for you at your leisure, but just to, it talks specifically to, you know, part of the reason why we've chosen the technological devices that we have. I want to thank Chi, and Laura Friend, and Joel Bates, Caitlin Angelo, Assistant Principal at Sawyer for helping out, Cindy Larson as well, she's unable to be here tonight, she's under another. So, and the, the biggest piece that I want to talk about tonight, because I think that is, you folks will be most interested in, really is the technological infrastructure and the digital device itself in that plan. I think all fall, I've been speaking to digital literacy, digital learning, safety and citizenship, as well as communication, so I really want to tie into the plan that we have rolled out for the device specifically. But we've identified four areas of focus, the device, digital literacy, safety and citizenship, as well as digital communication, in terms of the four areas of focus for our digital learning in the district. And I've identified the objective in terms of educating all of our learners through enhanced communication and collaboration and organization, to develop those skills, to really be responsible citizens.
Now, remember that she had said that everybody had, should have read this by now, so we're just wanting to hit the really key points.
This is the review in terms of defining digital learning, and the essential skills that are there. But I want to speak specifically to what we're currently doing, and what we've done this fall. And a visual for all of you, in the K through 2 classrooms, we have iPads that kids are using. In our 3 through 5 classrooms, we have Chromebook carts that are located in all of our 3 through 5 classrooms across the district. And then I've spoke specifically all fall about our 6 through 12 one-to-one Chromebook initiative, where every student is equipped with a one-to-one Chromebook device. That's what that looks like across the district. This is our digital deployment plan, which we really want to take big notice of. And in terms of rolling it out through FY '24, FY '19 is where we are at now, and we deployed new units to our 6 graders and our 8th graders. And then that's the deployment plan moving forward for next year, we will just have new devices for our 6th grade, one-to-one. And then starting in FY '21, we are going to have new devices for our 6th graders and our 9th graders. And moving forward, that is how we will roll through. We will have new devices that come to our 6th graders, and new devices that come to our 9th graders. Our 6th graders will take those through 8th grade with them, and then they will get new devices when they are 9th graders. So middle school Chromebooks stay in the middle school, and high school Chromebooks stay at the high school. And then they will rotate through that kind of evergreening plan, moving forward with our, with our Chromebook initiative. We've also have an estimated cost there, it's about $85,000 per grade, so, you know, next year for FY '20, we will spend 85,000, approximately $85,000, and that does cover the device, cloud management, et cetera, that comes with that.
And if fiscal year '21, you'll-
We will then move to correct that, that would double moving forward. In terms of digital literacy, the things that we've been currently doing, in terms of what I've been reporting out all fall, we do have a blended learning format, you know, we are moving to a one-to-one, but it's technology as well as literary resources in books and text in a blended format in the classroom. Continued professional development, our teachers attended the MasQ conference, that was in the superintendent's update this fall. We continue to explore online educational resources that tend to be free. CommonLit.org is one of those, that are free resources that we can access. We have a focus on empowering teachers. And our professional development series this year really is tied into digital notebooks and the use of the Chromebooks, as well as empowering all learners, and we'll end with George Coros's visit here in March on that same theme. In terms of moving forward, we're going to continue to explore on transition to online textbooks. Online textbooks and resources are continually updated. When you buy a textbook, a hand textbook, those aren't updated as much, and we, and we tend to keep those for up to a decade at a time. Whereas online resources, we're able to buy one year, pilot it, see how it goes, and we can make a determination at the end of that year whether we want to continue with that, or look elsewhere, in terms of being cost-effective. We're continuing to expand our curricular resources that are utilized in the classroom, new applications, software in the Google Suite. We're piloting programs to inform our purchases in the future. We're exploring, researching new online educational resources, and we really want to look at moving towards digital portfolios for kids that can travel with them as they age up in the school district. And we do have two new ITS faculty that are helping to facilitate our digital learning in our classrooms, particularly in the middle school this year, and they're working two, two days in the central office, and we are deploying them out to our middle schools to co-facilitate digital learning in the classroom. In terms of citizenship and safety, we offer lessons on digital citizenship at the beginning of the year with the Chromebook. Our content filters are now carrying through to home when kids bring their Chromebooks home, the same content filter is used at home. Appropriate use of the Google Suite, we're teaching proper online etiquette and ethics, handling inappropriate communications, privacy, security, continued lessons on digital and media literacy. And CommonsenseMedia.org is one that we do use in terms of educating students, and it's one that we rolled out to our parents at our one-to-one information night this fall, as a resource that's helpful to focus on safety and citizenship. This is really where we're, where we're moving ahead, this kind of digital footprint, and creating a positive digital footprint for kiddos, and really continuing these lessons. We want them to maintain healthy online presences, the importance of that, maintaining their privacy, you've heard me talk about privacy all fall, and working with vendors who will sign those privacy agreements, protecting their information, asking permission to access and share, and always keeping their information positive online. And in terms of communication, currently, we have deployed our one-to-one Chromebook initiative and our policy, it's on the district website. We have an acceptable use in Chromebook agreement. We held our one-to-one parent information night in the fall, this fall and October, which we had about 60 parents show up. We have the new use of the Google Classroom across the district. We have cleaned up our webpages, 1,100 pages have been deleted from the website, faculty and parent feedback for the new website, digital communication to our community through School Messenger, our websites and Twitter feeds, and our school open house, and uses and uses of our digital technology when parents come and visit in the fall. And moving forward, we're looking at our learn platform that houses all of our applications and software. It allows us to cooperate and collaborate with other school districts and other vendors to get good information on why these things are properly used in the classroom, or why we should purchase them, or why we should not purchase them. They also allow us to pilot programs with groups of teachers for free. Outreach and new applications with groups of teachers. Our new ITS faculty will continue to work with our Neshoba faculty in the classroom. We've got a new help desk in the high school media center, which is working extremely well. Instead of students filling out tickets when they have a problem with their Chromebook, they're actually bringing it to the help desk. The help desk is able to help them either solve their problem, or the adult is actually posing that ticket, embedding that into our technology department. It has been a huge help in the high school. I know it has made a huge difference in terms of the number of Chromebooks that are actually coming into technology, when, when our adults in our media center know how to potentially fix problems and head them off at the pass. New professional development opportunities for our teachers on digital learning. Our newly updated website will be up and running in January for our district and the schools. We're looking at learning management systems, which house a lot of student information, and then we plan to offer a digital parent night, digital safety parent night in the spring of 2019, this spring.
That's awesome.
And that's that!
How quick did you talk? Elise, thank you, Elise.
I have a super quick question, that you may not immediately have the data on, but as we're moving to more one-to-one, obviously, which is awesome, do we have any data in, within the district about how many of our students don't have reliable internet access at home, especially if they're taking their Chromebooks home to do homework?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a great question. I don't have that specific data. Do we have that data, Chi, in terms of the number of kids who don't?
I don't think we, I was sorry, parents on that. My understanding is we have, obviously, 100% of our markups. Because like, if, you know, we talk to school principals, I mean, if any particular student have, don't have access at home, I'm sure like, you know, one boss will, will hear that by now, but it would happen.
It's something that we can look into a little deeper, I think it's worthwhile looking at, but my first reaction too is, I bet you we're close to 100%. I don't know if we're at 100%, but-
What would we do if we didn't give them the, what would we do?
There are a couple options, like, a couple service providers, but depends on like, if the student really have like free lunch, or reduce, like, I think there are special programs, you know, the-
You're right.
The parents can buy the internet access. Or if they still cannot afford it, I think the school can have those, you know, cellular, those kind of data.
Just like, yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Okay, thank you. That's a good question. What else? Elaine?
Digital safety and citizenship, I want you to applaud those slides. I think they're clear, I think they're concise. Any argument for why this is important, and why we, as the schools, need to address this, I think is really clear. That being said, the digital literacy under the curriculum and PD still feels fuzzy. It feels like we're, we're being asked to make a massive investment in one-to-one and other technologies for the sake of replacing what we're currently using. And I, I would like to see that pushed further into, I forget the model, the model, the four-step model there.
SAMR, SAMR model, yeah.
I, I will, I'll be honest with you, I, I mean, I appreciate the question, and I know the question, and I think if there was more time tonight, I probably would have been able to tease that out a little bit more. And the point I wanted to make too at the beginning is that digital literacy is such a tremendous evolution, and in the, and I think, in the think tanks that I had with Laura Friend, and Joel, and Chi, and the others, we came to that conclusion, like, it's a new day, there's a new application, it's a new day, there's a new online educational resource, you know, next year, there's going to be, so I think we continue to evolve-
Evolve around that.
And so it's baby steps, you know, when I go to a conference, for example, there are just, it's just a wealth of information out there, and I think that we, our message to parents too in the fall was this idea of this blended learning format around curriculum, particularly, and not just a complete shift over to technology, because there certainly was a lot of people who value the textbook, or value the novel, and, and value how to teach those skills that are not technologically based. So I think that's where we're at now.
There's a lot of teachers that I would imagine probably aren't going to use it if it's just, here you go, use technology and empower students.
And our elementary teachers are still very much, you know, they're not one-to-one, you know, those kiddos are not one-to-one. So we're, we're in that balance, and trying to strike that balance, and it, it certainly is a, is a shift, and that takes, that takes time. So your question is, is valid, and I, and I feel that too, because it continues to evolve, yeah.
Todd, this might be a question for you, or to building administrators, I'm wondering with the new digital plan, if there are certain expectations for teachers to implement different modalities of technology in the classroom, or if it is just another addition to their toolbox as an option? Or are there certain things that will be sort of like embedded into the curriculum using that?
It doesn't matter who wants to take that.
Yes.
I think I was going to say, any one of us could.
There are multiple angles to using the technology. We, we talked several times about the, the idea of, it's not a perfect analogy, but you learn to read so that you can read to learn. You, you move from understanding mathematics at a concrete level so that you can use them for abstractions. And I think the same analogy holds true for technology at our- At our younger grade levels, there are opportunities to use them in scheduled computer classes, but an expectation that some of that follow-through happens at the elementary-level classrooms. And again, not, you know, not universally, but where they make sense to learn those technologies and as that evolves into the middle level. And again, this district has been incredibly supportive and I think progressive in putting technology in the hands of teachers with the expectation that it is that evolution, evolutionary continuum that, you know, we're moving from the way that we would have done things, you know, as a substitution, the Sammer, to rethinking what that looks like and bringing the world to their desktops and how they interact with that. Would you like to add?
Well said.
She's like, are you kidding me?
Again. All of our teachers are using technology to support and enhance instruction at the middle level, and it has to make sense.
Right.
I give you an example. You spoke about A Christmas Carol. I want kids to have that text in their hand and be reading it and go to the theater to follow up. That makes sense. But then the teacher also took Paradek as a tool and used Paradek to help further support the understanding of the learning of the complex text, to help deepen their learning and make connections to other texts. And in that case, reading the text in itself made sense, but using the technology to enhance the reading of the text and the analysis of the text made sense.
Go ahead, go ahead, Joel. No, I could give you another example, just in our work with the...
We want to watch our time. Sorry, I don't, we could really talk a long time on this.
Just one other example at the elementary level. Principal Mukerin and O'Shea and I have had a conversation about what our bookrooms look like in terms of a digital footprint as well. So having our book bins with digital sources and using QR codes to access primary sources and articles and, you know, so that there's both an online presence there as well that, you know, sort of leverages the information that's out there and available and adds to and complements the bookroom as well. So another way to...
That's helpful, but you folks have just been talking about it's really helpful to understand how it's being used. So I know where you want to go, but today is about understanding the digital literacy plan approach.
So there's another update?
When we get to, yeah, when we get to budget discussions. Yeah. That's when we talk about the cost of everything we've been hearing for the past several months. Go ahead and say it.
No, it's just, it isn't just, I mean, it's, how do you sustain it? It just gets larger and larger. You have to hire more people. Every book you get, you have to take a yearly, you don't own it.
I don't know that it, I don't, I think what they put forward is an evergreen, so we know, we kind of know until the cost of the implements increase naturally as they would through the manufacturer or distributor, we know what we can plan for for five years, which we didn't know in the past. We were kind of, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, yeah, that's what the discussion is on, right, is on the digital components. So we can start to build a five-year plan, at least with that component, right?
Can I just say, the current, what is, the article that you posted, the PDF, the one about Chromebooks? It does go into detail about how it saves money.
It does, which is why I provided it for you in there to, because I knew those questions and those concerns would come up tonight.
Remember who paid for the study?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, as someone who does...
Okay, yeah, Susan, good point. Steve, you're such a skeptic. Sitting.
It laid out a pretty good argument.
That's okay. We need those.
What's that?
I'm teasing Steve. Okay, do you have anything else to share? I see another component here.
That is the exact same plan, and it's just written for you. So you have a hard copy with the timeline of when we are going to...
We followed the exact same approach that we did with the communication.
Okay.
There's nothing you do.
So we are going to get to a point in our budget cycle where we will start debating this and the cost one. All right. But I don't think that was the topic for tonight. Tonight was, what are we doing? What is our digital learning plan? How is it being used? How's it being implemented in the schools through the teachings, through the staff and the students?
I do want to, I do want to commend our middle school principals and our middle school staff, because when I arrived here in July, I mean, the rollout this fall and what they are doing with digital literacy and Chromebooks and the smooth rollout this fall across all those middle schools has been flawless. And it is because of our Billy Princels, it is because of Chi and his team. So it was a lot of work to do this fall and making sure every kid had a Chromebook in hand and the teachers were comfortable with those Chromebooks and using them in the classroom. So thank you to this team.
And I know our doors are always open for anyone to come visit and do some walk-throughs.
We love to show off.
Yeah, we need to do that. I think we need to start getting a little more involved in the schools.
We'd love to see you go into those bookrooms too. The bookrooms are amazing, so...
That's good, because we made a big stink about them last year, sister.
Yeah, they're gorgeous. They're gorgeous.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for, I appreciate you waiting, and now it's a long night, folks. All right, we're moving on. School committee manual approval.
Okay, at the last meeting, I shared the PSC's recommendations for revisions to the manuals, and folks wanted some more time to go through the manual. I did make one addition in terms of the subcommittee, the personnel subcommittee's goals throughout the year to reflect that. A review of the school committee manual will also include to review any policies that are new or need to be updated. Still to be added in the appendix are a list of the central office departments and staff and Brooke will be working on that, the glossary and the school committee members, FAQ, is going to be developed by the personnel subcommittee. We're going to use the next several meetings this year to work on those. So I think that we're ready to bring it forward to, for approval.
But you just said there's a bunch of work that's...
Not a bunch. It's just, you could approve it with the understanding that there are three documents for the appendix that need to be added.
The school committee member, FAQ, the glossary, and...
Central office departments and staff.
I'm not going to approve anything that's school committee member FAQ without seeing it.
Okay.
But I'm good if you guys want to take a vote, just because I think FAQ is pretty important, especially for people who are...
Well, we would bring it back for you folks to approve. We wouldn't just do it and then stick it in there, I don't think. Mike, Mike, but...
Why do we need to approve it now? Is there a reason?
Because you told us, we had to.
I did not tell you you had to. I said you had to work on it.
Okay, we're working on it. So if you want to wait till those are done, that's fine.
Yeah, that way we don't lose pieces.
Well, it's complete in principle. There are three pieces that need to be added.
Is it done? Is it done? It's not done. Do you guys want to vote? You throw a motion on the floor, and I certainly will help guide it.
I actually, we had made a couple suggestions from policy, and did you write that if there's a conflict between this and policy, that policy supersedes?
That was early on, wasn't it?
Not in the, that doesn't go in the manual, I don't think.
Well, would any of this, would any of this conflict with policy?
It can't. If you want it to be some kind of a codicil to it, but it's sort of in our, sort of the lower land, you don't put anything in it, it violates...
Well, no, just, policy will always supersede. We just wanted to make sure, because it would be written in multiple places. And the other thing was the list of issues that the school committee has to review yearly.
Which is...
Dorothy is actually, that's why I CC'd you guys on those minutes. The, Dorothy is looking up all the policies that the school committee is required to...
I don't know that she agreed to. Susan's like, shh. Call her agreeing to that?
Yes, I asked her, she said, she was the one that suggested it.
I don't know that she's...
I thought there'd be once every, once we've, once we've finished all of the revisions to the policies in the sections that haven't been brought forward to the school committee, and then they come forward to school committee and the whole thing is approved, then you can't generate a list of policies that need annual...
Well, no, they actually said in the policy in the very end, it said, "School committee shall revisit this every year." And that they'd have to do with concussion.
Right, but not all of, the whole manual hasn't been approved yet, so we have to get that whole manual approved before...
So we're going to wait three years until we do that?
It's not three, no.
Well, we, this is only the second year of doing everything, right? So we're going to wait?
We've done all the...
This is your third year.
Third year. No, it's not the third year.
Is it not? Now there's one more year.
No, it's been a year and a half. We didn't start till December.
Oh, really? Oh, my goodness, my apologies. I thought we were on our third year as well.
I thought we were too. Or twenty. No, because it was halfway through.
Your first year.
Yep. So this is, we're coming up on our second anniversary.
Right, that makes sense. So we need a third year. By the end of the year, you're, right.
I guess. But the issue is, I mean, are you going to wait a full year before you actually review the ways that should be done?
What are we, what are we, we're, okay, so everybody, I don't get frustrated, and I don't mean to shut you down, but we're supposed to be talking about school committee manual approval. Either we're going to approve or not approve, if there are steps we need to take in order to prove it at a later date, what are those steps? And moving on.
If you're not in a hurry, why don't you wait until all of these pieces are done and then present?
That's fine.
And then if you have something in policy that you would like to recommend to bring into it, take it up in policy and have that discussion, I think.
And give it to the personnel side.
There are keyword searches you can make once it gets put online through the MasQ server. You can do a keyword search and then pull the list from that. All right, yeah. But I will reach out to her just to see if I'm misunderstood.
Are we moving on?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, budget and warrant.
Budget and warrant had a meeting today. Two out of the three people were there, and...
Sound like a local paper.
It was a relatively quick meeting. We just went over the things that we've already seen. Tonight, the treasurer's reports and the monthly, monthly statements, and we decided that we will not meet again until after the budget session, the Saturday budget session.
Oh, oh, oh. I thought you meant like budget season.
No, no, no.
Oh, no, we could do that too.
We could just take the rest off.
No, we will, we will meet after budget session.
Got it. That makes sense. Budget Saturday. Ooh, I like the way you said that. Okay, CPAC, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you so much. Correspondence, I think we're pretty good here. Anybody have anything? And on the consent agenda, unless anyone has any concerns, we'll assume that the meeting minutes of December 5th, 2018, and the meeting minutes of November 28th, 2018 workshop, 28th workshop are approved, and that the warrants of December 21st, 2018 have all been signed. Okay? Items for next agenda, it's in the packet, the, on the calendar. I want to commend Alina and Superintendent Clenching because they have just embraced the calendar, and it's always up to date. So can I steal yours?
Yeah, we have.
Thank you. I know, it's awesome. We've got a pupil personnel services update on new programs, the high school report card, which is always a really cool discussion, the high school review FY '19.
No, actually, I think that might be an error. We might have made an error today.
That's not the newest, that's not the...
That's not the newest one, because we took that one, that one item off, but the...
Who's not using the tag?
That's the handbook that we mentioned.
Oh, oh, the handbook.
So we're going to take that one off, and we're just going to move that one down to April, I think is what we did, because that's, it would make more sense, that's when it's going to be.
It's the program of studies that's...
The program of studies is a big one.
So when will we receive that? Because that's...
You already have the link to the program of studies.
You sent it out.
Yeah, you sent it out. Oh, oh, we're already good on that.
So make sure you guys take, don't, don't think you're going to be able to do that the night before. Make sure you review it. We're not selecting classes. We're just reviewing and approving the program of studies and any...
And this is going to be the benchmark meeting, because you're going to have another follow-up meeting right after that with potential changes for the new one. So the first meeting, that's why it's on here twice. The first one is kind of establishing the benchmark, just kind of go through, acclimate yourself to it. Paul will be here to discuss it with you, and then he'll come back with his department chair's suggestions.
Is that good? And then, and if anybody has an item for the agenda, let me know, and we'll see where we can put it.
I'm just going to request that Alina send that